Wow, wow, wow.
Little WD-40.
It's a deal.
Okay, I think we're all good. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's December workshop. It's hard to believe we're already at the end of the year and December is upon us. I would ask if you would please silence your cell phones. And workshop is a time for council to get presentations from staff, to also give presentations and awards, and to discuss any agenda items that may be coming up during future council meetings, as well as have some executive session items if needed. To start out this morning, we have a very, very special presentation, and thank you. And that is to Greg and Gina Snyder, who have been in the past very, very generous to the city, and they continue to be. And I would ask if they would come forward, as well as K-9 Rena and her handler. Rena's a little energetic this morning.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I first want to say thank you for this opportunity to be here. It is certainly an honor to have the opportunity to acknowledge members of our community today. One of the many wonderful things I love about our city and our community is the supportive and giving hearts that we have here in Myrtle Beach, and that is no different today. If there is a need, we always find a way to fill it, and we work together. And Gina and Greg wanted to be a part of that in helping our team and our community and keeping our community safe. And that is exactly what they did. As you can see, a little rambunctious, but sweet as can be. They donated the funds, and we are introducing the newest member of our Myrtle Beach Police Department family, K-9 Rena. K-9 Rena joins our team thanks to a generous donation that allowed us to grow our K-9 unit. She is now the fifth K-9 actively partnered with an officer at the Myrtle Beach Police Department. I said fifth, but it's actually six. Excuse me. I apologize. That's six. Rena is a Belgian Malinois trained in tracking, apprehension, and narcotics. These skills give officers valuable support in the field, including helping locating missing individuals. Her partner is PFC Michael Carfora, who has been with us since 2022 and comes to the K-9 unit from our waterfront team, and he's been a very active member of our team. We're very excited for him to expand his career. After Rena completed her initial training, the two spent six weeks training together and continuously does that here in Myrtle Beach. This time, helped them build communication strength in their bond and officially pair as a K-9 team. We are proud to welcome our K-9 partner, K-9 Rena, and PFC Carfora to their new roles. And stay tuned for updates. But without further ado, I want to say an appreciation for your support and commitment to our community and department. Greg and Gina Snyder, thank you for your assistance and dedication. This date, December 2025, from the Myrtle Beach Police Department and the City of Myrtle Beach.
Yes, thank you. Could you come to the mic, please? Thank you.
The whole idea came up about a year and a half ago when Debbie and Bill visited us in our community to give us some updates on things going on in Myrtle Beach. And it was actually Debbie that said, we need another K-9 on the police force. And when she said that, my wife nudged me. And a few weeks later, we were happy to donate the funds, and we're happy to meet the beautiful dog, Debbie. Thank you very much.
Well, we are most appreciative for both of you. I think we should see how well Rena is trained. Brian, if you want to get up and run, and we'll let her go and see if she catches you. Thank you both very, very much. Come to the mic, please.
We're just really grateful, especially not just me, but our entire shift who's proactive out there, especially during the nighttime hours, whether it be stopping cars, tracking people, finding evidence. She's going to be very useful, and she's already been very busy. So we appreciate it just from our unit, and we look forward to a lot more to come. Right?
You have a great friend there.
So while we're here, I wanted to take one more minute just to acknowledge the Myrtle Beach Police Foundation for their efforts in supporting the K-9 unit as well. If you're not familiar with the Myrtle Beach Police Foundation, this was created almost three years ago now. About three years ago now. They are also a huge contributor to the K-9 unit in addition to several other scholarships here in Myrtle Beach. And we wanted to just take an opportunity to acknowledge them as well, not only for the K-9 unit, but everything they do for our department as well. So in appreciation for their support and commitment to our community and department, present to the Myrtle Beach Police Foundation, thank you for your assistance, dedication, for our team, and continued growth for our unit. Represented today, we have not only Master Corporal Dusing, but also Captain Morrell. So I'm going to ask Captain Morrell and Master Corporal Dusing to come on up.
Thank you very much for your service. Appreciate you both. And I'm going to ask Captain Morrell just to talk a little bit about the foundation as well.
Sure. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I think everybody here knows me. Like the chief said, a number of years ago, we founded the foundation after we lost Jacob Panter, and it was just the right thing to do. And that's the chief set everything in motion, had everything lined up, and we are a registered 501(c)(3) organization. We are made up of four active members. We have three retired members and four community members. And as together, we do fundraising. We have two major fundraisers throughout the year. We just had our 5K a couple of weeks ago at Title Creek. And then we have a golf tournament in the spring coming up in February at Presswic. And with that, we're actually issuing this year six scholarships to rising seniors. They have to meet certain parameters. Some of them go to Myrtle Beach High School students, and then they're going to be, the other ones are open to the rest of rising, not rising seniors, rising college freshmen for Ori County Schools of some children of police officers. So we're going to be issuing a total of six scholarships, and this will be our first year. It's taken a lot of, like, a lot of organization logistics to get the scholarships in place, but we are happy to announce we're issuing six of them later this year in those parameters. And then there's certain things they have to do, and they'll be graded, and we'll be issuing out the scholarships. But like the chief said, we do get a lot of donations for our K-9 unit. The community loves our K-9 unit, as shown here, in our SWAT team for some reason. We get donations for our SWAT team. I don't know. But we, I'd say, we're involved. We exist to support our police department. Give you an example, we had an officer who had a fire at his house. He lost his entire house. And we gave him assistance to give immediate needs, whether it was deodorant or some new clothes. But we helped him to get on his feet to start rebuilding his house. So we do things. We had another officer whose child had to go to Augusta for some medical treatment. We provided funds for him and his wife to have lodging down in Augusta. So we do things of that nature just to support our police department.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both.
All right, thank you. And we'll see you in February.
February 21st.
Thank you again for all of your support. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. And now we welcome Brian Piasik and Jay Hood with an update on Coast RTA and Fire Station Number One. And Brian first, just in case not everyone has heard, why don't you share the great news?
That's one of the things that I did want to share with you all. Really appreciate the opportunity to come here this morning. The real reason why I came is to thank this council. Obviously, for us, getting on to Ride Four was a huge, critical need. Gives us support for generations to come. And it's not a sexy legacy, but it is a legacy for this council. You know, we've done a lot for public transportation in Myrtle Beach and the Grand Strand for future generations as a part of this. And it was your support that really, I feel, pushed us over the top to get that. There are two components to the, do I have power? Two components to the Ride Four program, 5.45%. It's funding that comes every year. It's got growth in it, so it's something that we can grow on. Very critical in that process was 25 million in capital facilities. Again, we thank you all for that. We've been going, well, we've already set in motion a bunch of improvements. And obviously, one of our biggest improvements is a new maintenance facility. If you, I don't know if any of you have been out to the Conway building that we're in. It's falling down around us. Had to repair a roof leak. You don't want to put any more lipstick on that pig if we can get away with it. And we've been going after FTA, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5339, bus and bus facilities, low NO program for five years. So we've been working on this project for five years. And I'm happy to report that year five was the magic. We got $25.58 million, which basically fully funds our building. And obviously, having that local match was a critical piece that really pushed us over the top for that. Can't really, it's a little bit far away here, but the grant fully funds a new transit center. We will be incorporating Greyhound and InterCity into that facility, a new maintenance facility that will be able to accommodate up to 60 buses and 100 small vehicles. So that's a pretty big system. I don't know if we're going to get that far, certainly in my lifetime, but it's got plenty of room for growth in it. And then obviously, the Fire Station Number One, which Jay's going to come up and talk about in a minute. In red are basically the funds that came in with the grant. And you could see, you know, there's some pretty big numbers up there. I will tell you that we were funded under the low NO portion of the funding program, which means we had to show a movement towards lower emissions with our system. And so the project includes five diesel hybrid buses in it that are replacing some pretty old equipment. So there's a really nice benefit from emissions perspective. And 14 million to get us to 34 million for the bus operating maintenance facility, and 6 million for construction of the Myrtle Beach Transit Center and replace the double way across the street over here. I put this slide in here for me because like that was number 50 out of 1,000 things that we need to do to get this thing built, obviously. But we're already on our way to getting an architect and engineer under contract. Really looking forward to catching up with the fire station development so that we can go lockstep. There are so many opportunities to combine forces on elements of the project, economies of scale, those types of things that we're really looking forward to working with the city as we move forward. But most of all, we want to build something that is a legacy. And thank you so much for helping us out on that. And I'm glad to answer any questions, or I will turn it over to Dr. Hood. It's an honorary degree.
Where is that degree from?
You don't even need to know. Is there any questions about where we stand or anything? No?
When do you anticipate this to all be complete?
I know, I was just going to get that question.
Well, it says initiate construction.
You know, it's funny, we've been working so hard to get this thing to be basically shovel-ready. And so now my team will be tasked with expediting this as quickly as possible. So I don't have a direct answer for that yet. I think we were looking at three, three and a half years if the funding didn't drop, but I'm hoping to cut that down to like two. But we should be able to break ground this year, start ordering long lead items, those types of things to really expedite the project.
Probably not this year.
We need it. I'm sorry?
Probably not this year.
I'm sorry. 2026. Sorry, I didn't want to push 2025 out yet. It's been a good year. Thanks, y'all.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations again.
After you, doctor.
My sister is a doctor, believe it or not. But this is an exciting project, partnering with RTA Brian, and then it's been a nice adventure. And the Fire Station One, if you envisaged the new Fire Station Three, just a standalone station in this, this one is going to be two and a half times bigger than that. So it's two-story, is going to be, is designed for three shifts with a four shift down the road. So we have a lot of future needs in this one. It's six bays. But if you really do your research on fire stations like I have, you can have a six bay or 12 bay. It all depends. Did a lot of research. It all depends on how you situate your fire trucks. So the units, the three bays over towards Gristle, that's where the big apparatuses will be, your ladder trucks and that. We went ahead and designed the other three bays on the other road, the back, we call that. Ryan, the private drive, don't worry. It's going to be the private drive. Okay, there you go. And we'll put, that's where the small ambulances will come and all that. This is a busy, one of the most busiest stations that Tom Guire, Chief Guire has. About 6,500 calls a year. That's a lot of calls. And so I've been out there, the existing station. And sometimes that ambulance during the summer doesn't turn off. I mean, it's that busy. So then we've got the, then we have an apparatus bay system, and that's in the back. That is the, it's not a shed, but it's actually for backup vehicles. When one falls down, they can bring one out and get it fixed. So that will be a story. So that'll be a storage for their ambulances, which, believe it or not, if you go up to Fire Station Two, learned a lot. They have three ambulances up there, stored. Two stored backups and one new one. So it's interesting to find out how they really integrate and work, and it's a very much-needed station. Then we go ahead, oh, let's see if I know how to work this thing.
Center button.
Center. This is the, this is the front view from Gristle Parkway. We're going to have the red bi-fold doors like what we have at Station Three. The main tower will have colored lights in it, hopefully, the one on the left, so you can see it from the road, that's going to be the tower on the road. And the reason why we went up a little higher on the bays, we have a company called Big Ass Vans. It keeps the air circulating in there, especially during the summertime when it's really hot, okay? So we need to make sure when the operator gets on the hoses of the trucks, on top of the trucks, he doesn't get his head hit. So we've learned a lot from Fire Station Three. So that is the upper, the second floor up there will be your EOC, Operations Center, and the 311 call center. So we're going to have two centers up there, we're going to have some offices and combined meeting rooms, and the EOC Center can be either meeting rooms, educational room, whatever you want to do, and any full-blown EOC. What we try to do and work for the fire department due diligently is not duplicate services in this building. So if you go to a full activation, and you're going to do cooking, downstairs is a commercial kitchen, so we don't have to double kitchens or anything like that. Got a break room up there where you can eat, but, so it kind of got rid of the double services like the city's used to having, which was easy. So, and the main entrance is the center tower, that's all glass going up. When you walk in, you've got two-story street, two and a half stories going up, and this is a side view of the private drive, like Brian said, hood drive. But what you have upstairs, you'll see there's a balcony, cover balcony, and there's a lower outside area. And doing a lot of studies with what the department have to go through, it is very encouraged to have some outdoor area where they can relax, and people at the EOC Center can relax. So you have quiet rooms and things of that nature. Individual bunk rooms, we don't have one big giant bunk room like the old days. Everybody has their own little dinky bunk room. We're off shifts. And this is how the site's going to be laid out, and Brian's site's right next door and things, so that's basically it. Oh, the schedule, we're about 90% finished with the plans, so we're that, we're real far away. We got, oh, Motorola and the IT people is the next part that we've got to put into the plan network. And then we're planning on going out for RFQs for contractors, probably in March, and then after that, God forbid, with whoever the selection committee does, and then probably in May, I'm thinking May, Michelle will bring this up to you for financing, how that's all going to be structured. And then hopefully we'll have the lands disturbance permit, takes about six to eight months. That's the longest permit we've got to get. And we'll start construction in July or August, like we've planned from the beginning, and start pushing dirt. And it'll take about 580 days from then. So, that's about it. Any questions?
So Jay, with this being a two-story fire station, I was told yesterday
Uh-oh.
That poles are no longer used because of safety issues,
That's correct.
But this will have a slide in it. Is that correct?
No.
Well, Chief Guire said that there's a slide.
Now, if he wants a slide, that's a want, not a need, so you can budget that through his normal budget. All, 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 fire personnel is on the first floor, all the bunk rooms are on the first floor, the day rooms on the first floor, you know? So everything's on the first floor. The second floor is just EOC, 311, and any extra offices for expansion and that.
Well, maybe he'll get a Barbie slide for Christmas.
There you go. Now we can put a slide in it.
And I understand you will be retiring at the end of this year?
Yes, I am.
So we just want to wish you all the best, and thank you for your service to our community.
I appreciate it. Believe it or not, I have 50 years into this city, with the city of Myrtle Beach and Myrtle Beach Farms and Burleson Chaffin. I've known, I've seen this city grow from dirt roads up to where you're trying to get it to go.
But you deserve a break. I hope life treats you well.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Now that we have you all excited about it, we have found out that the property acquisition is going to cost about $300,000 more than initially anticipated, and I just wanted to let you know that next council meeting, we will be bringing a motion before council to appropriate an additional $300,000, and we would like to appropriate that from the capital projects fund balance, which is currently about $32 million.
Right.
Question. So this fire station will replace the one that's currently on Joe White?
Yes.
And what will, what will happen? What will we do?
That remains to be seen. I think you could ask about any department in this city, and they could tell you what to do with it, so.
Yeah, okay.
I think that'll probably be something discussed with council.
Yeah, we get to the right time, we'll bring that to council. There's been some conversation, it's all over the place. A lot of departments have said, no, we can do this, we can do that.
Everybody wants it.
Everybody wants it.
Everybody, everyone's got ideas, but
Yes, gotcha.
We're a few years away from that, so when the time comes, we will obviously engage council when that time comes to talk about what will happen with it.
Okay.
Council's got some ideas, too.
I'm sure they'll be, council will have ideas as well.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, Chris Miller, would you like to give us a Vietnam memorial update?
We are excited to announce that everything is finalized and we are ready to go to construction in January. We have procured some of the long lead items, black granite for one, which actually comes That's the longest lead item that we have on the project that's already been cut and is being shipped currently. So I've asked Jessica Wise with Greenberg Pharaoh and DRG Group to just give you a little bit of the intricacies of the monument, but it is ready to go. And like I said, we have signed a contract with Montith Construction to build it, and we are in really good shape for our timeline, and I'll go over that after Jessica's done.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so just to recap, this is some of the imagery that y'all saw last time we were here. So the memorial, like Chris said, has been going well. We've got a really good partnership with all the vendors, the artist, the black granite, and the contractor. Everybody's really enthusiastic, and everybody's been playing really well together, so that always makes for a great project. Let's see, I'm trying to get to, do we have the construction drawings up here? Okay. So what I wanted to share with you a little bit today, those are the images that we had seen before, which were some of the graphic representations of the project. We also had the construction documents that went out for bid, well, not for bid, because we have a contractor working with us. And so those have some of the details, some of the bronze medallions, the plaques, the information, some of the stuff that we've talked about this whole time and learned from the veterans, and wanted to show that are in actuality on the construction drawings. Here we go. All right. So as you'll recall, the location of the memorial is in the far end of the park, so it can be seen from all different angles, so that's still in play and important. We've got our construction layout plan, our materials plan, and then again, I just wanted to kind of go into some of the details. So you can see in kind of the bottom right-hand corner of this page, we have the dedication plaque, we have some of the skate guards, which we were able to fabricate in a star shape. And then, and this slide in particular has like the council dedication plaque, the veterans' dedication plaque, the timeline plaque, which is going to go on one of the sides of the walls, which has a lot of important dates, events relating to the Myrtle Beach Air Force Base's involvement, and also just significant events throughout the war. We have a map on the other side, opposite from where the timeline's going to go. We've got kind of a worldview map so that people can understand where Vietnam is, and then a map of the countries that were involved and very important to the veterans themselves. On the right-hand side, we've got the medallions, we've got the eight-inch medallions, which are going to go on the seat blocks as you walk into the plaza space, and then we've got the six-inch medallions in the top right corner, which are going to go into the plaza-facing side of the seat wall. And those medallions, I think there's a few more spots, I think we've got 19 of them right now, but there's spots for additional ones if, you know, a veteran comes up and there's just something special that we haven't acknowledged. So there's room to grow in the memorial. Landscape plan, we kept it super simple, we wanted the focus to be on the memorial itself. And then just running through some of the stuff, we've got, you know, your typical irrigation, civil engineering for, and electrical. So we've thought a lot about, you know, how do you light the memorial, how do we make sure it's seen at night, how do we bring accents to it without taking away from all the important elements itself? And Chris, you want to come back up and talk about schedule?
Yeah. One thing I did want to mention is we did team up with several of the suppliers that helped us with World War II monument, so the two monuments should seem similar. They're both going to have their own identity, we didn't put them close together, they're both separate, so they'll both have their own identity. But I do want to go over the schedule with you, I believe. So right now, the schedule is to break ground on the 2nd of January, notice to proceed will be given to the contractor. We'll start all of our site work, there are three pine trees that have to be removed, but then we're going to go ahead and start the basic monument. We go all the way through to the 12th of May, that's the final start of our punch list item. It gives us about a two-week interval to correct anything that we don't like, and Meredith and I are going to get together and start scheduling the ceremony for Memorial Day of 2026. We feel real positive that we're going to meet that schedule, we don't see anything in our way, everything is very good. One thing I do want to bring to your attention is we have talked about the three sculptures, life-size figurines of soldiers and an injured Air Force pilot. We were unable to secure the foundry that has to make the statues. The artist is making them now, but we cannot cast them in bronze until midsummer. So what we thought we would do is have another dedication for Labor Day, have the sculptures installed, and have another ceremony come Labor Day. That was outside of our control with the foundry. Apparently, there's very few foundries in the United States that cast statues, so it's been a great process, learning all the things involved in the monument. We've even had some discussions with Washington DC, with the National Monument Team up there. They gave us some really good information that we've incorporated into the monument, so just wanted to give you a final update that we're ready to go. Right after the first of the year, you'll start seeing construction.
All right, great.
Any questions?
Thanks, great.
I do want to thank you for your support, and I also want to thank Buddy Stires and the Redevelopment Authority for their support. Both of you have been great to work with and a great foundation to get this project going. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Hey, Chris, let me ask you, I had a family member of a then-and-then veteran, he's now passed, but asked me a question the other day, and I sort of asked and see, is there a possibility to do something like, I guess like they do for members who served in the Air Force at the, you know, the wall they have out there?
Like an individual plaque?
Yeah.
We have been trying to steer clear of that.
Okay.
Just so we don't have plaques all over the monument, if you will.
Yeah.
We have basically put a generic plaque on the monument for all that served and gave their life for the war, and honoring them, but we've steered clear of the personalization of it.
Okay.
You know, if there's something that we can do in the park itself, we'd be open to that, you know, planting a tree or something like that, but we're kind of steering clear of that on the monument itself.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we do have one executive session item, so I will ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter involving the city manager and the city attorney. The attendance will be limited to members of city council only. I have a motion.
Motion to approve. Our motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made from Mr. Chestnut, second from Mr. Smith. Any discussion from council? Any discussion from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Second. Discussion from council, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. See everybody on Tuesday for our last meeting of the year.